This conference will now be recorded.
All right, once again, thank you everyone for attending. Thank you Graham and the social team for setting up and Valley Fiber for the treats and the coffee. It is now ten after seven on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, and I'll call this regular council meeting to order. I respectfully acknowledge that we are meeting here on Treaty One territory, the traditional homeland of the Inishan, Abey, Cree, and Assinenu Nation, Dakota, Assiniboine, and Denai people, and the homeland of the Red River Métis. We acknowledge the harms and mistakes of the past and we dedicate ourselves to finding ways to move forward in partnership with First Nation and Métis communities in the spirit of reconciliation and collaboration. Before we move into our introductions, I would like to once again remind residents and visitors that abusive, rude, or disrespectful comments and behaviors against any of our staff or council will not be tolerated. It has been a frustrating spring for a variety of reasons, and we all share your frustrations. But that does not give anyone the right to be disrespectful in conversations, phone calls, emails, or presentations. Should we feel that this is occurring, we will stop the meeting until we can move forward with respect. On that happy note, introductions around the table.
Steve Backsley. I just ate a cookie, sorry. Lon Turner.
Penny McMorris, Mayor.
I'm Councilor Graham Randall. Councilor Ian Chatsey.
And on the screen.
Greetings from Montreal, Councilor Erwin Kumpke.
You still have your eardrums after going to the Formula One or whatever it was?
Three days of getting sun baked in wonderful hot weather. It was an exciting event. My sixteen-year-old granddaughter was absolutely thrilled, and so was I to be there with her.
All right. Thanks very much. And I'm glad you're here. All right. There you go. So I'll move on to adoption of the agenda. Be it resolved, the agenda be adopted as presented. May I have a mover? Thank you Steve, second. Graham? Thank you. Any additions, gentlemen? Hearing none of those in favor?
All right.
Carrie? Thank you.
If it's okay, we might be able to just have one handle. We just had a vote. I was just hoping for just one minute of silence for the politician who died a couple of days ago. He was shot in her home in the U.S.
All right.
We're starting to see political violence in North America, and I figured that it would be good that since we're having start our meetings now, reminding people to not be verbally violent. They might want to have at least some respect for somebody who tried to serve their community.
All right, thank you. I'll just... We didn't have the vote. No, that's fine Steve. I'm just trying to remember if I have the vote. We did. Motion was carried, so on that topic.
Do we do it during correspondence?
No, we can do it right now. How about ten or fifteen seconds of silence to honor elected officials who are being shot and abused? Okay, thank you Steve. Thank you everyone. All right, we'll move on to the minutes of our June 3rd, 2025 regular meeting. Be it resolved, the minutes of the June 3rd, 2025 regular meeting and council be adopted as presented. May I have a mover? Thank you Steve, second. Ian, thank you. Any discussion on the minutes, gentlemen? Hearing none of those in favor? Carried. Thank you. All right, we have a delegation this evening, Linda McMillan, on wildfire risks and evacuation plans. I can just give you the microphone if you like. And you can sit. The podium is gone, so if you want to...
The podium is gone?
The podium has moved. So if you want to just sit and use the mic, that's fine.
Is it on?
Yes.
Yeah, the mic's on.
I think actually I want to stand. Eric, I'm worried.
Kind of reminder, Linda, that it's ten minutes.
Yes, I'm very aware of that fear.
Are you okay there? You don't want to talk?
No, I'm okay. All right, yeah. Four weeks ago, if you're all aware, five weeks ago, forest fire ban season began here in Manitoba. And I listen, as I always do, very carefully to the news and the frustrations and the concerns and everything that people were experiencing. The way that people had to be evacuated, the lack of understanding of what needed to be done, the poor communication, that the province acknowledged has happened is also an issue here. And it worries me that we are a community that is very divided on how we should be acting and what we should be doing. And so I wanted to make a public statement about that. We've been a settled community here for 140 years. Mostly, or began in the eighteen eighty-five with the first settlers coming and homesteaders being established here. Later cottagers started coming up from Motemig and Victoria Beach. Company bought land, built the restricted area, sold the land to various folk, built a community. But we are a resort community, and we are on a former island. We have one road in, one road out, and no clear understanding of how to remove ourselves. We have to amalgamate the parking lot if it's a fire in July or August and the rest of us who live outside the restricted area. There is no earthly way we can move two to three thousand cars out of here with the only information we, the property owners, have right now of just go to the parking lot and we'll put some police officers on the roads and you'll all get out. It won't work. And even more so, for the last twenty years, we've been saying to our employees who provide fire services, please share with us detailed information. Now, when I was on council back in 2014, one of the first things that was on my agenda was to have a public understanding of how that was to happen. We had Shelley Napier, then a provincial employee, bring us and several other RMs together in Selkirk, and they showed us a video of how to evacuate an Indian reserve in Ontario. That was our plan. Relying on their own school buses to get people out. Well, we don't have a school division. We don't have school buses. Occasionally, there have been buses here, but there's no earthly way that that would work for us. We have to have a clearly explained way to come and go. The other part of this issue is that how do we maintain good services in terms of fire prevention within our community? Where I live, the homesteaders cleared the property where they lived, and because they were Fisher folk, they didn't worry about what's in the back. Nothing in the back really made a difference because it couldn't be farmed. It was their source of fuel, which was really good, and they did do a reasonable job. There were mint farms, but again, the forest sat. When we started to move in there, I purchased property forty years ago, we had cleaned our lots for our cottages, but most of us bought there because we wanted to live in the boreal forest. Not, we did not buy in Grand Beach where there's no trees or Elderd Beach where there are fewer trees and open, clear spaces. We bought in the north because we appreciated the forest. And most of us have worked really hard over the last forty years to maintain our properties. Back in nineteen eighty-eight, when the big windstorms came through, I lost forty-six trees, so my property got cleaned up over the course of the next year or so. I have friends in the restricted area who also, children who made fortunes cutting trees for the summer. And our Public Works was really good on that one occasion on clearing out the road. McCully Road was undrivable, and they did a great job on cleaning it up. But on the whole, when trees fall on McCully Road, RM cuts along, cuts it, throws it in the bush, and leaves it, assuming that it will just compact, compost, and go away. But to anyone who rides trails regularly, you know that the trees that were there thirty-five years ago are still there. They haven't been miraculously dissolved by the insects of our forest. So we have half of our property, our island, that is cleaned and maintained fairly well by the property owners. The young man who did the drone survey and explained that to us last July said, "Most of us are pretty good about that." But he was not employed to look at the two square miles of municipal property where nothing has been done pretty much in the last hundred and forty years. Occasionally, things happen, but mainly it's a fire hazard, and we don't have a way of dealing with it. We have no plans, nothing that is explained to the people. I attended the meeting last July where the police and various others were involved, and as one of the young councilors said to me on Sunday, we've got a plan, but it has never been explained to the property owners. And what is the plan? And is it eligible? Is it possible that this is a good plan? How do we get across the road? There are two hundred of us in July or August with vehicles in the northwest corner. There are another hundred and fifty over in the northeast corner. Then you have to get everyone off of Fifty-Nine or David Road and through that causeway. It's not clear to people. And my concern is we've been not telling the property owners, the residents, the taxpayers, what is expected, what the plan is. It just, we've got a plan. And as people like me age and can't drive, the idea that, oh, we know who the disabled are, which I've been told by our V M O people as an answer, you don't know. There's no registration. There's no way that that is common knowledge. The other piece becomes a buildup on what Joanne Parker was talking about last meeting is once we're over the causeway, ninety percent of people know to use Highway Fifty-Nine. That's the way they get here. A few people know that we can get out using eleven via Pine Falls, much longer route. A few other adventurous people have taken twelve down to Highway One and Steinback area. But there are other routes as well, and we do not share that information with our residents. So that one silly day, I decided I would drive up Henderson Highway and to the beach, and so I did. And it took me on a very old highway out of Selkirk going north. Eventually, I ended up in a couple of water-filled ditches near Lebo and backed up, but I found the dry route. And the other thing is most Winnipeggers do not have experience driving on gravel roads. The grid system in Manitoba is extremely good and a clear map showing the routes that allow you to follow the grids south. Now, we've got two blocks. We've got the block at Scanbury where there are no routes around that I know of. There might be something. But on my silly day through Lebo, I did not find them, although I found the wonderful route that goes from Patricia Beach straight up to the R C A P at Grand Beach. A really good road that I would suspect the bulk of you in the room have never used. But it would be great on an evacuation to be able to do that and get out. So we need more communication. We need clear maps. Thank you, Joanne, for that suggestion because something visual is what is needed. The idea that, oh, well, we could just listen to the radio and they'll tell us how to go doesn't account for the issue that some seniors will drive at a slightly slower rate because the visibility is poor. And impatient forty-five-year-olds in trucks who have a high vision point and have heavy foot will be ready to kill the old folk.
And can you wrap it up, please? Can you wrap it up?
So, as I say, we need to have, one, an attitude that takes away the fire from here, a map that gets us out, and communication that tells people where to go. Because at this point, we're starting another summer. We have no information and no time for council to prepare information for us and very little desire on the part of some to do that.
That's uncalled for. You can...
No, no, I'm not, Penny, I'm not...
Linda and I will. That's enough. Thanks very much for your conversation, for your comments. I do have a few things I'd like to address. Do you need help sitting down or are you okay?
I'm sorry that you're angry, Penny.
I'm not. I'm just asking you to stop picking on council, and please have a seat.
No.
Thank you.
I'm not trying to be oblique.
Thank you. Linda raised some really good points, and I would like to address some of them because they are important. And Linda is absolutely right. We are in a wildfire season like we have not seen in our area for a long time. VB Connect is our emergency information system. It is available on our website. If you have trouble with the website version to sign up, please call the R M office and they'll help you. You can get information on your cell phone, on your landline, by text, and by email. Should we have an emergency, when we have an emergency, that will be our first line of communication to residents. Every emergency is going to be different. We don't know where it's going to start or what it is going to be. So the information that we get out to you will be relative to that. We do do brush pickup and brush and deadfall removal. It has been done for years. We continue to do it. I spoke with our fire chief today about the brush, and he suggests that although we haven't implemented it, perhaps residents should stop for now because our brush pile is huge. Keep the deadfall on your property and water it down on a regular basis until we can pick it up again. We are still picking up though. I'm not saying that this is happening. It's just something to consider if we don't get to it or you have a brush pile later in the summer. We have hired an arborist to help us with removal of dead, dying, and dangerous trees, of which we are very aware. There are plenty in this municipality. It's an expensive budget item, and it's one that has increased every year, and then we put more money into every year. Linda mentioned the simulation exercise with our emergency consultant last year, and we were thrilled with the turnout and the volunteers who did come, and we were happy with how it turned out for us. We would like to have, I believe, two more coming up later this summer with Shelley Napier, our emergency consultant. And that will require lots of resident participation. She wants to set up a reception center, which is something that she's found during this current rash of fires and evacuations that people are awfully unprepared for. All residents should have a seventy-two-hour go-bag ready with important papers and medications and contact info and clothing and food and pet needs, et cetera. There is a shelter in place and emergency family evacuation plan on our website. It's a twenty-page document that helps you, that walks you through certain things that are helpful in an evacuation. Council, our fire chief, police chief, and our parking lot operators are meeting on Friday with our emergency consultant to review evacuation processes and procedures for the VB parking lot, especially in the busy summer months. Last year, we built a new egress road from the back of the parking lot onto Pine Road. That was done by Public Works and a local contractor, and that provides one more emergency exit out of the parking lot if required. Council does have an emergency plan. We're going to be talking later in the meeting about a new emergency system that our chief and our emergency consultant are very strong supporters of that will allow our people up the field to have the information more readily available than in the current binder that council members have. So vulnerable residents, residents with mobility or disability issues should have a buddy system in place. We do not know who all of our vulnerable residents are. We do not know who our vulnerable renters are. So you need to make sure that you have a buddy system in place to help you provide some security and options in an emergency. We have to all take responsibility for our health and safety. Emergency crews will go around all areas in a fire or an emergency with glow, I almost say glow torch, wrong word, glow horn, to advise residents that they need to evacuate. If necessary, they will go door to door to advise residents and determine if they need help to leave. Some people ask about the siren that used to be, used to go off every Sunday at noon. That was removed years ago. It's been refurbished. It is at our old fire hall, and we hope to at some point place it on our new fire hall. But that siren doesn't tell people what the emergency is or where they need to go or what they need to do. And if you've never heard it before, it might just, I don't know, scare you or make you just go, hey, what's that funny noise? So it is a tool, though, that could help alert people in the case of an emergency. So do we have a plan? Yes, we do. It will be, it depends what the emergency is, how it will be enacted, and how we will advise. Ian?
I just wanted to add to that. As you pointed out, we won't know what the emergency is until it happens. And, you know, I know people will think they should go with their car. That's not always going to be the case. So you need to find out what the emergency is and then find out what the direction is. Because if the fire's down by the parking lot, that's not the place to go. I just wanted to add that.
I had a couple of hopefully complimentary points I wanted to bring up. Number one, I've been talking about it for years, and here it comes again. Our FM radio station, eighty-nine point five, that should be a central issue on advising people where to go, what to do. We've talked about getting it back in operation for years. It's a arduous process, the internet and this and that, but every year we show it on our information to residents. It's all, you get to deliver it to your door every year. Listen to eighty-nine point five in an emergency. Well, it doesn't work. Let's get the damn thing up and fixed. That's number one. Number two, Linda's right about, I mean, a lot of people don't realize that after you get out of the parking lot, I've got to help us with that, but after you get out of the parking lot, there's lots of places you can go. You can go downhill side and pick up an old highway that runs parallel to the beach. You could take number eleven. There's a number of options. I would like to see a map that we can distribute to show you. Once you get past Hillside Corner, where the hell do you go from there? There's a traffic jam. Or if the fire's following you, the wind goes the other way. I advise you to agree with Linda on a map that would help show people where to go. These roads haven't, most people don't even know these bloody roads exist, but they do. And they work. And the fact that it's gravel, it's saving your life, so cough a little dust. Thank you.
With the smoke perhaps, the smoke. All right, any other comments, gentlemen?
I'd just like to add one comment, if I may. Hopefully, the meeting on Friday will result in a simplified plan that we can share with our electorate to give them some direction about what the alternative evacuation routes are. And hopefully, we'll be able to coordinate activities between our fire and police and our parking lot and our gate to, so that there they can work together to organize the evacuation process. Otherwise, we're going to have chaos.
Well, sorry, if people are on Connect, they'll get the information. They'll know where to go, when, why. That's our first line of defense. And it proved valuable in the Traverse Bay fire that was here a few weeks ago. But what they did find is that those people who weren't on Connect were completely out of the loop and didn't know about Connect, didn't know where to go to the reception center. So when they did reopen parts of the Burr River area, they were, residents were told if they were not signed up for Connect, they would not be allowed back into their homes until they signed up because they have to be on an emergency evacuation alert. So it does work. It is critical, and it's for everyone's safety. All right. Enough preaching from me. We'll move on, please, to committee reports. Public Works, a reminder that there is still a fire ban in place. All trails are closed, even though people have removed the signs, and fire pit applications are not being processed nor can existing fire pit permits be used. Creating roads has been completed and application of dust off has begun. Public Works staff have received dozens of complaints about Valley Fiber and N L U, and they are working to address all the concerns. As always, we have a very long list of dead trees. It will take some time to take care of these trees. The vehicle restricted period goes into effect this Thursday, June nineteenth, at eleven fifty-nine P.M. Door-to-door garbage pickup begins on June twenty-third. Garbage must be brought out to the road. Bear-resistant garbage containers are available for purchase at the depot. Staff will require approved payment before distributing the bins. Forms can be sent to the Winnipeg office, or e-transfers can be made to vicbeach@mymts.net. The bins are still three hundred and fifteen Q one five dollars. Brush piles are for brush only. For the safety of the cleanup crew, please, no building materials, no old boards with nails, no rocks, no metal poles, just brush. Please do not add additional brush once it has been picked up on your street. Reminders once again, green G F L co-mingled bins are for broken-down cardboard boxes, paper products, aluminum, tin, pot cans, et cetera, and plastic containers. It's not for plastic bags. The smaller green G F L bin is for glass only. The garbage bins are for bagged household garbage only. And the bear who has been digging a hole underneath the fence has figured out what's in the garbage bins. The VB garbage and recycling area is open daily from nine to five. Passes are required, and the fees for jumping at the VB site will be the same as the Traverse Bay site. We cannot accept household hazardous waste or e-waste recyclable items, unfortunately, per our Divided Mental Compliance and Enforcement Contract. Water samples from the Wildfire Hall and Elderd Beach Compost and the water treatment plant are taken into Winnipeg regularly for mandatory testing. To receive notifications by phone, by text, or by email from the R M, please line up for VB Connect. All right. Finance. Ian, can I move on to you?
Please. I've got a long list here. Cash on deposit is one point two million. Went through the operating budget, and I see that all of the departments are in line with their spending to date. So already, nothing to mention there. And that's it. All right, so. All right, so, short story.
I thought you said you had a long list.
I'm cheating.
All right, thank you. Our fire department, Steve, please.
Okay, so this is going to be a long one.
Ian Long, are you a part?
Yes. So I'm going to do this a little bit different, differently, so I'm going to do the submitted report at the end. I'm going to do everything else upfront, just so we can try to get people to listen to the information maybe. So the primary threat continues to be the drought conditions and the density of coniferous trees and the underbrush. So, again, please remove the conifers that are on your property. Conifers, as I said the other day, are evergreens. Evergreens burn roughly about 10 times faster than deciduous trees. So as an example, the Traverse Bay Fire that was there several weeks ago, even though the wind was blowing south, the fire was traveling slowly north. That is how flammable these things are. They are the old forest trying to literally burn itself down and to start the renewal process. So please remove all the evergreens, even the small ones, because if you leave it for a couple of years, eventually, it's hard, it's hard to remove. So take out your evergreens, and please replace them with deciduous trees. Clarify, deciduous trees are leafy trees. They burn substantially slower, and the fire department is actually able to get them. One more thing is that in videos, you can find them online, of every core is burning. It is a literal wall of fire that goes towards you. For deciduous trees, the flames are above you, so you actually get safety there. Also, please install property irrigation systems on your property, and if you're going to be watering your property, as a lot of people have already started, you only need to water an area for about 30 minutes. You do not need to do it longer than that. That is a drain on our water system, and if these drought conditions continue, we'll end up in the same situation that we did a couple of years ago, where we had to start asking people to not water. And so please limit it to 30 minutes. If you already have an irrigation system on, installed on your property that covers your whole property, you can time it so it's just on for 30 minutes, and that's going to really help so that we don't actually have to ask you to stop watering in the future. Also, have a five-pound fire extinguisher on your property. I'm going to get to how many fires have been created by humans just this one year already. But if you have a five-pound fire extinguisher, if something happens, you can try to put it out, you can try to put it out before it becomes a problem. Please, Firesmart property. Firesmart does not mean clear cuts your property. There is, there is one of the things inside of Firesmart that does say to clear a vegetation with 5 and 30 meters. We are not, I repeat, not asking you to do that. We're basically asking you to do everything else. So get everything from underneath of your cabin, put it as far away from your cabin as possible, but please go to Firesmart's website and see what you can do. Also, really consider as to whether or not you need that fire pit that you have in your backyard. And that's not a joke. I'm legitimately asking you, do you need this thing? It's not just for this year. I want to be clear, that is not just for this year. Do you actually need that fire hazard outside? It doesn't matter if it's permanent. It is a risk. So please consider if you really need it, if it's really worth the risk. Also, there is a brush cleanup, thankfully, for these volunteers coming out, that is happening now in the spring and fall. We will be advertising the fall pickup on our website. I'm assuming that it's going to be in the Herald? Yes? Yep. So it'll be advertised on the Herald. This one group has finally started to help with municipal area, but it's not happening right now in the north, or the east, or the south. So please, for those areas, if you want to start one up, get in contact with me, and I will help you do, start that process, and we can go through what's required for you to do that. It would be fantastic. We get multiple groups doing this, so we can start finally tackling this problem. There is a family emergency plan on the website. It does not have a map, but is certainly something that, you know, we can, absolutely can look into. Of what you need to do there is you just need to go to our website, or you can go on to any search engine and look up Victoria Beach, Manitoba, put in Manitoba because otherwise it'll send you to the other one. Victoria Beach, Manitoba, emergency plan. There are three links on there. One is to the great big documents, then the other two is for evacuation protocols for inside the VRA and then outside the VRA. If you see any branches that are hitting hydro lines, please call Manitoba Hydro immediately. It is not a direct emergency, obviously, unless you see sparks, but it is something that they will respond to very quickly. Tell them that the hydro line is coming in direct contact with the branches, and they should, should come out and get to it within a few hours or a couple of days. The phone number there is 1-888-MBHYDRO, so 1-888-MBHYDRO. A provincial-wide fire ban in effect as well as a municipal... One more before I get to the final report. Just to give you some ideas as to what this fire season looks like, there has been 122 fires reported since, since April. That is 100, sorry, 103 of those were started by humans. 14 were natural, and five are still under investigation. So the problem is us. So especially as we get towards the long weekends, that is really, if we're going to have, if we're going to have a wildfire in our community, most likely, that's when it's going to happen. Finally, a report. There were a total of seven emergency calls received by the B.B. Fire Department in May. Three of the calls were in the R.M. of Victoria Beach. Two of the calls were for trees sparking on the hydro lines, and one was for a CO/烟 smoke alarm sounding in the structure. Two of the calls in the R.M. of Alexander were for grass fires caused by sparks dropping down from trees touching hydro lines. Three, oh, sorry, there were no injuries or property damage in these calls. The last call in the R.M. of Alexander was to a possible water rescue on a windy day. It was determined that there was no one out on the lake or in the water. The last call in May was a mutual aid call to assist the East Beach's fire departments with a fire call as they were busy attending to a large grass and brush fire. Please remember that there are no fireworks permitted in Victoria Beach, regardless that there's a fire ban in effect or not. The Victoria Beach Fire Department remains on high alert due to drought conditions that have been and continue to be a concern. The Fire Department continues to maintain their gear and equipment and has been training to deal with E.V. fires that may happen, despite the fact that they are a very small fraction of all vehicle fires.
But they happen, just like any fire. Thank you, Steve.
Cold and crap.
Holy.
Holy, indeed.
That's, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I know.
You're passionate about it.
All right, thank you so much, Steve. Erwin, move on to the committee.
Yes, our, our new chief constable, Mike McKinnon, and his second-in-command, Sean Lauery, are settling in quite nicely. They are trying to get caught up on some statistics that fell behind in earlier in the months when we had issues with injuries. Regretfully, we are losing Jules Worr, who is resigning his last day, will be on Thursday. He's accepted a position in East Selkirk, which is, or probably East St. Paul, which is much closer to where he lives. You know, I would like to personally thank Jules on behalf of the Police Board for his excellent service to our community, especially when we encountered problems when Ann Boyko sustained a serious injury. Frank Worr is, has accepted and will take responsibility for the .6 position that had been filled by Jules. Our CSOs are very busy. In the past month, they attended to 123 different activities. They're handing out tickets on noise, on ORVs, parking, and traffic tickets. And you'll likely notice the beautiful new vehicle that they are using. It's well-identified. It was interesting, I heard a comment from a resident saying, "Is the C.S.O. a new program?" And I said, "Well, it's been around for three years now, but the new truck," which is a leased vehicle, by the way, we only lease it for the summer, "is clearly identified." And I think, as I've said many, many times, one of the most effective tools in policing is high visibility. So that's my current report for now.
Thanks very much. I'll move on to golf.
No, no break-ins.
Good to hear, thank you. I'll move into the golf course. Ian, do you have a report?
Yes, this one's a bit longer.
Are you sure?
I am, yeah. I'm serious this time. There's a bunch of tournaments coming up this summer. B.B. Ladies Tournament, Men's Tournament, July 5th, Women's Tournament, July 30, Juniors, July 16, and 55+ September 8, and then the members only in August. And each of these groups are asking for $100, so I guess words got out that the council's generous and provides a $100 token for their tournament, so I don't know if we can vote on that, or we could say yes, or...
We had 300 to set aside in our, in our budget for grants for soccer golf tournaments, so...
Well, they're adding more, so. There's a number of, which is great, that just means the golf course is going to have to be used. Golf course in great shape, I think. There's some bald spots and some areas that need to be tended to, but for the most part, it's in good shape. Greens are in good shape. There were sprinkler heads that were changed. Keyless entry for lockers were repaired. And lastly, oh, a May report. So there was $74,536 generated for revenue in May versus last year of $68,787. So numbers are looking good. We received two golf carts, new golf carts, and they're being used and rented. People are enjoying those. And I think that's all for a moment.
All right, what about the brushing?
I did, I did, actually.
I did, yes. What about the brushing tree removal that was done?
Tree removal, that was, I think they were supposed to be five days, and I think it got cut back to three, just for, to use those services in other areas, which is fine. Brendan is the guy's name. He does a great job. He's fast, he's got all the equipment. There were at least four or five trails that sort of go from one hole to the next that had so much dead wood, and he went in about 20, 30 feet and pulled out as much as he could, cut it up, and then he would grind it down. So he's done a great job. Now, there's, I think there's one or two little trails left. Then, of course, the main trail from the community center down to the golf course wasn't done, so that's one that should be done.
Okay, thank you so much. Municipal buildings, going around them.
Okay, just in a way, one to run through it. We've been doing a lot of work on the stairs down to the beach. The main one was an extensive rebuild of the Fifth Avenue stairs to bring them up to code in terms of the run and the risers and the handrails. The Fifth Avenue stairs are almost complete. There were no finishing touches on, on the handrails that always, it's kind of time-consuming. But we have a, the contract with a very reliable guy, and we know he's going to finish that up for us. Continuing onward with the stairs, there was an issue on the Red Wing stairs. They're a little bit wobbly. We're not ready to rebuild them yet to code because that's going to be pretty extensive. So I had a contractor look at it, and he's stabilized the stairs that they'll be building as a few hundred bucks. So that's improved. However, we have to consider a rebuild of the Red Wing stairs, perhaps next year, because it's one of a number of stairs that's not up to code. There's too many, too many risers without a landing, and it's not wide enough to accommodate the metal handle. So that will be a continuing and ongoing issue as we address all of our stairs based on which ones need most, or which ones, there's the greatest event. As far as, and we are, however, proceeding with basic repairs at Seventh Avenue and Patricia. We made some repairs. We made a tour and visited all of our R.M. plates. There was some minor repairs needed at Pier Point and Saddle Road. That was attended to, and we checked the, we checked the others and made some minor adjustments to hardware, but just a minor adjustment. If it doesn't latch properly, that's a problem. It has to be dealt with. So in fact, I'll be making the rounds of all these toilets with our contractor later this week, just to make sure everything's up to snub. And I'm going to put a wastebasket in each, in each toilet because there's, there's some paper debris. There's no paper towels dispensers for obvious reasons, but toilet paper and other things tend to accumulate on the floor, so let's give them a wastebasket. I've got a load of them in the back of my vehicle, so I'm going to make the rounds and deposit there. Back to stairs again. The complete rebuild of the Alexander stairs to code has been moved to 2026 to comply with vegetary limitations. It was just going to be too expensive, along with all the other work on Fifth Avenue and this and that. Along with the Alexander stairs, there's also the stairs on McCord, and there's some along Victoria Boulevard, and the rebuild that I mentioned over the rest. We're going to get as much of that done in 2026 as possible. It would have put us too much over, but let's concentrate on what we can do and get it The, another issue was the repainting of the yellow lines and the various municipal steps. That's in progress, and that will be part of my tour later this week with the, with the contractor who we've, who we've selected. Over to the golf course. Completely rebuilt the wall of the garage, which is all rotted. That was a big, expensive job. Had to replace the whole thing and the substrate, so that's done. Looks like new, it's lovely, and it cost a lot. And we've also, we brought the ramps and the handrails to the two washrooms up to code. We widened, widened the walkway and put in proper spaced handrails and the metal rails that go on. They're not quite finished yet, but that's, that's a nice improvement to the golf course. And of course, a few weeks ago, we completed the rebuild of the back step to the club. So we're doing work there to keep it serviceable and safe and presentable as best we can. And that's my topic for the morning.
Thank you very much. All right, I will move on to the doctors' call. Committee, please, Steve.
Everything right now is running smoothly. All the cleanup is obviously done. The doctors are now, they should be, this week, or for some reason, I forgot, this weekend, actually. But I have the keys now for the spare keys for the doctors, just because the person who was going to have them wasn't able to stick around for the summer, so those are, those are, you know. And other than that, yeah, it's just ready to go. Oh, sorry, we don't have a physician yet for the last week, so we're still looking for that one last week to get it filled up. It's kind of a depression that we lost because we could... It's kind of a portion that we lost because we couldn't fill it up with a couple of others before, but yeah. If you know of any doctor, by the way, or have a doctor of your own, then please ask them that they want to come up here for a week.
All right, thanks, Steve. Communications, there is an article coming out in the upcoming Herald. When will that be delivered, if I may ask? Will that be coming up?
Four hours ago.
It's here. All right, thank you. So Steve and I work together to put together articles for the Herald just about every week. This one focuses on the school tax issue. Information Office, that is me, I can advise that Caitlin, Noah and Jillian, Noah and Jillian are new, they will be at the info office on Thursday morning, June nineteenth, from nine until noon, for permanent residents who qualify, for persons with medical passes and approved contractors to pick up their vehicle, vehicle pass for the season. A reminder to those who do receive a vehicle pass, you need to obey the rules of the road, the Noah's bylaws, if you're working in the community. And unless you have specific permission, your vehicle or vehicles must be parked in the parking lot or outside the VRA every evening. They cannot be parked on property if you are in the VRA. And once again, any use of our staff or up the pass could result in the pass being revoked. We haven't had to do that yet, to my knowledge, which is great. Building Inspector Graham?
Okay. Oh, excuse me. This is courtesy of our Building Inspector Curtis Boeburn. His report for the month of May. There was one RTM, which was the subject of much debate at the last council meeting, so we got that one in the bag. Six decks, one leveling, one rental, one garage, one fence, one addition, and one made building. The value of permits issued for the month of May was nine hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred dollars, which brings us the value of permits here to date to two million two hundred seventy-two thousand dollars. And the permit fees, which should clarify Ian's heart, six thousand for the month of May for a total of seventeen thousand a year to date, and that goes to defer the cost of employing a very effective building inspector. So that's Inspector's report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to trails. Do you have anything, Steve? I have a few things back here, Dan.
Well, they're all shut down except for the ones going to the golf course, because we're about to talk about that, assuming that's what you're talking about.
No, the golf course trail should be closed.
Oh, no, but I was saying, because we were having those emails earlier today, is whether we should allow for some travel directly to the golf course.
I did on that, okay. Do you want me to address that? Okay. I talked to our fire chief today about opening the trail. There's been some concern that the golfers who don't live within cycling distance, bicycling distance or whatever, can, can use that for a green trail from the toboggan hill into the golf course, and could we open it for the golfers? So I ran it by our fire chief, and he reminded me, and I remind all of us, that the majority of the province's wildfire resources and equipment are busy fighting fires in other parts of the province and will be unable to rush to our aid should a fire start in our community. All the trails will remain closed, even though the signage has been removed and ripped down. Removing or ignoring the signage can put us all at risk. It just takes one irresponsible individual to start a fire. I know it's inconvenient. We all know it's inconvenient not to be able to access those trails, but a fire would be devastating. So we all have to pull together as a community, and I, I do, I'm not thrilled that this is happening, but the province is in a state of emergency until June twenty-sixth. So under our fire chief's advice, we would like to, we will be keeping the trails closed until June twenty-sixth. We'll reassess, we'll see what the province has to say, and see what our situation is. We've had no rain, we're still tinder dry, right? So better to be cautious and safe than sorry. And the police advise that under the Wildfire Act, those caught using closed trails could face a fine of over four hundred dollars, which I was not aware of, now I am.
That was a very good point. I was going to ask if our police are on side with this, whether the signs have been ripped down or not. I'm glad to hear that they have the power to enforce this.
Uh huh. Okay.
I'm wondering since the game wrote down, I mean, when I, I went to work this morning, they were there. I did check on the way out, but if they're getting torn down, and this is rather extreme, should we toss up a small rock on the, I, I know, but if they're getting ripped down?
But if we toss up a small rock, then we have to get the rock out of the way in case we need to do that, right? But I just...
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying like a huge massive boulder, it's just something.
Yeah, I don't know. I would hope that people would realize that this is for everyone's safety.
Either that or possibly put up a chain rather than just a little, you know, thin piece of rope.
Pretty sturdy rope that they've used. I'll check the one thing one on my way home tonight.
Myself and a friend and Ian were the ones who put all these signs up, and it took a little bit of work, and I've replaced a few, and it's very frustrating. Also on the trail, we'll be talking about this a little later in the agenda, we are going to be hopefully approving a trails project to map all the trails in our community. And this is through Trails Man, a toolbox. So, you know, that's it for trails for me. Moonlight Inn, Graham?
With the Moonlight Inn, I've submitted quite a bit of information to one and the rest of, of council. Three sightings, three job sightings on May sixteen, May twenty-sixth, and June the fourth. And accompanying each one of them was another series of pictures, of photographs that are beautifully done. So you've got all kinds of stuff going to populate our website to keep our residents advised. As you know, we don't publish the minutes of the meeting. They pertain to all the individuals, substrates, so and so needs to shorten, as somebody's got to deliver that, somebody else has got to speed up or whatever. They are very well done, they're very elaborate, and it gives me the confidence that the job site and the people have it well in hand, under control, attention to detail. So it's come along very nicely. And that's my Moonlight Inn report and our website for fullness. They're doing a beautiful job.
Again, I can also advise that we raised almost a thousand dollars to donate to Ronald McDonald House from the discards from the Moonlight Inn, the old Moonlight Inn. Sold all the windows, a couple doors, some booths, all the stools, tabletops, so. Yeah, so some people have a little piece of the Moonlight Inn that they can somehow use in their cottage or their garden. Shoreline Advisory, Erwin, do you have any updates on that?
Following our last meeting, I solicited some assistance from two of my colleagues on the committee, and we are now drafting what we hope will be the final recommended, a final report and a recommendation to council. I'll be back in Winnipeg on the weekend, Monday, actually, and we plan to meet. The idea is, once the draft is prepared, it will be reviewed in detail by the committee, voted upon, amended possibly, and I hope within the next... I hope that we'll have it ready for review at the next council meeting, the following one for sure. So it's, it's not an easy job, it's, it goes around and around and around, but we're, we're spending a lot of time, and we're getting a lot of great help from our geotechnical engineer, Steve Popping. It's really good to have him on the committee. He provides a tremendous amount of professional direction for us, so work on it.
All right, thank you so much. Fire Hall, look, Ian, do you have any?
I do. I do. This one is longer. Two parts to it. The, just a little history, September two thousand twenty-four, we selected G3, the architect, not the drawings, for the fire hall. He was instrumental in finding a building for us, but it was supposed to be sent to Jasper, but because of their fire, they couldn't accept the order, so we got it at a real bargain. That building was delivered to Fifth, so it's over by the fire hall. Let's see the pieces lying beside the fence, with that fancy fence.
Yeah.
Enclosed it. So on May two thousand twenty-five, we received thirteen bids. I think, was it two months ago, we sent a resolution, we had a budget of two million dollars. The bids came in, two point three million up to three point eight from the thirteen different people that bid on. So all the bids were too high, so we asked them to go back and sharpen their pencils. And we suggested that maybe the training tower, there's a training tower and a hose drying apparatus in the tower, and that tower is used to train firemen to climb ladders with fifty pounds of gear on, holding a hose, and then the tower is also used to dry the hoses. So we suggested that maybe you should take that part out of their equation, and we would do a fundraiser for that. So then they came back, and we made a short list, because the ones that were up at three point eight million were just too high, so we narrowed it down to four. Two of them came back, there's still three to four hundred thousand dollars over budget, and two were under budget. So, and those two were pretty close. So we decided to focus on qualifications. The subcommittee is recommending LCL Construction. Their qualifications, they're bonded, they've been in business for forty years. Look at their website, you'll see they've got about thirty-five examples of different commercial buildings they built, fire halls, public works, buildings, things like that. I checked their references. I called a few of the CAOs that hired them, they got top marks, they delivered the building on time and on budget, so play good references from that. And the company has twenty employees. The employees have been there for ten years. They've done twenty years of pre-engineered buildings, which is what our building is. So I think they're the right company to, to build this. They'll have a full-time site foreman on site, probably starting the second week in July. We just need to sign some contracts and have them reviewed by our lawyers. So that's an update on the fire hall.
All right.
Now, on the training tower and hose drying apparatus, we're going to do a fundraiser, as mentioned. And so we're recommending that we try to raise about five hundred thousand dollars. That's going to be our goal. The two million dollar budget that we set aside last year, of course, because inflation, tariffs, prices are just higher this year, which is why those bids were so high. So the tower is very important to the fire men that are volunteers, they need the training, they're always looking for new recruits, and so they need to have a tower to be able to practice, climb ladders with a lot of gear and everything else. We're going to put the siren on top of the tower, and then, of course, the tower is used to dry the hoses. So what we're going to do is just push the tower building out to next spring, so we'll build the fire hall first. New fire truck comes, I believe, in May or June next year, and then hopefully we'll have the funds to build the tower. We will put the foundation in for the tower, so that, that'll be in place when we're going to start to build in January or in July, January. So all we'll need to do is just order the, the structure, which will be steel, and then have someone install it. That's pretty much it.
All right, okay. Thank you very much. Any other committees that we're missing? No, all right. Thank you, gentlemen. Be it resolved, adopt the committee reports from May as presented. May I move her? Thank you, Graham, second Ian, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, thank you. A lot of, oop, sorry. Oh, there you go. That's a lot of information, so, thank you. I'll move on to accounts payable listing. Be it resolved, the following list of accounts will be approved for payment. Check one three three four zero to one three three nine one in the amount of four hundred thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety-three cents. May I have a mover? Ian, thank you, second. Steve? Thank you. Ian, anything, any discussion on this?
I kind of went through it and just picked up a few items. Unit seven was nineteen million, the golf carts were twenty-one, sorry, nineteen thousand. The golf carts were twenty-one thousand. We had some legal fees for, I think it was employees, and then the recycling was six thousand, land building was six thousand. Those are just one of the items I picked up on.
All right, thank you. Any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, thank you. All right, I will move on to new business, seven eight, fire station construction bid award. Be it resolved to hereby... Go ahead.
I missed one. I was wondering why the number, the numbers didn't really match. Sorry, I missed one item through all right contract, it was two hundred ninety-five thousand, but that's the one that...
That's the Moonlight Inn?
Right, definitely, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Be it resolved to hereby approve as recommended by the fire station subcommittee, the award of the contract for general contractor of the Arnhem VV Fire Station to LCL Construction Limited, located at two thirty-five Main Street North in Carmen, Manitoba, subject to the following notes. Scope of work includes original design presented in the tender, but excludes the training and hose tower, plus other changes noted in Schedule A, revised pricing. The total contract price is one million eight hundred ninety-nine thousand plus GST. This award is based on price while meeting the requirements of the tender. Wesley Leboisier is authorized on behalf of LCL Construction Limited to execute the contract in accordance with the terms and conditions outlined in the contract documents. Do you like to move that? Second Graham, any further discussion, gentlemen? Erwin, do you have any discussion, or were you just trying to get your name off?
I was, I was really impressed with LCL. They, they came to the table, they addressed our concerns about trying to reduce the budget, and I'm very confident in recommending that we proceed with that.
Yeah, I too share Erwin's enthusiasm. I found that the LCL people were very good to work with. They understood, they, they bent, they bent over backwards to meet our number. I sincerely believe we made their choice in these people.
Okay. All right.
I could repeat what I said, but I won't.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie?
Expect two million bucks.
Just, we haven't started yet. We will... Yes. Well, thank you. I know the, the subcommittee worked closely with, with our architect as well to get this to this stage, and I'm looking forward to seeing some ground being broken soon.
Right.
Thank you so much. All right, I'll get that back to you. Moving on to the Oxready Emergency Management...
You sure?
I'm not, I'm not sure, okay. Moving on to the Oxready Emergency Management software. Whereas wildfire risks to the Arnhem Victoria Beach are increasing every year, and managing or preventing these risks is becoming more challenging, and whereas there are software packages available that will enable map-based planning to support emergency preparedness and will enable streamlined information sharing in the event of a wildfire in the region, therefore be it resolved to approve the Oxready Software Solution Proposal for the amount of five thousand dollars, which will be configured to enable the following: mapping of trails, routes and values, emergency planning, storage, incident initiation, emergency alerts, alerting, response and action log. May I move her? Thank you, Ian, second. Steve? Oh, sorry, Erwin. Council did have a presentation by Oxready, as well as our marketing consultant, Shelley Napier was on that call, and our fire chief, Brad Patcher. And this is one of the things I alluded to earlier. My, one of my questions for them was, will this, will this obliterate or work with our VV Connect, which we are urging people to continue to sign up with? It may not work with Connect, but until we get this up and running, I'm still, I still think it's wise to continue to promote signup for Connect.
So, yeah, like the, the company and the program, like I was able to review on my own, it's all stellar, but it actually needs to get set up this time, and it can't just be... And it can't just be half past or this is going to be too much work or how are we going to do this? Because there's all these issues. If we're doing this, we need to do it in full, full stop. No discussion. Not like, well, we might run into these problems. No, but if we're doing this, we do it. And that I'm a hundred percent for.
Okay. I imagine you couldn't have attended the presentation. They were pretty adamant that.
Yep. I agree with them. It just, I agree with Steve. This is really no different from building a website. And I've done many of those over the years. This is a company that will take information that we give them and they will put it into their system. So we need somebody at our end to be responsible for the materials that come in. So I'm all for this. I think it's a great idea. It's certainly a great price. But we need a point person at our end to, and also for the HTFC. Same thing. Those two things go together in my mind. The company that's going to redo the maps. Because they're going to take those maps and put it into this software. So it'll all be, it'll all be part of it. And again, it's information in. If it's good information in, it's good information that comes out and so forth. I'd like to at least have that conversation with who's the good point person.
I can be the point person on the maps with the next resolution we have up here. But I think the Ops Ready Emergency Management Point Person needs to be an administration person in our office because councils come and go. So I think it needs to.
I think there's two parts to that, though. I think there's the first part, as Steve was saying, you've got to set it up. You've got to set it up properly. And then once it's set up, and I agree that men should be responsible for it. But you're going to ask Lon to set this thing up? It sounds like.
Brad will, Brad will volunteer.
Right, he did volunteer.
Well, I think Brad is going to help, but I'm not sure he's technically.
Does he have the resources? This is an enormous amount of data entry. Just mind.
It's a data entry exercise. It's not really an opinion or someone talking about something. It's, somebody has to do it. Right, you have to give this information to.
To them.
To them. They are, put it on an app, right? So it can't be just sort of, let's do this and let's do that. They're not going to create the content. So that's my point.
He may have to ask us for an additional employee. There's going to be manpower associated with a mind-boggling amount of data entry. And it's the right thing to do. And we should point out to our residents that largely through the efforts of our EMR consultant, Shelley. This is a forty thousand dollar program. She got it for us on, as part of the trial basis of Victoria Beach for five thousand dollars, which is what we're voting on today. It's a hell of a deal. Will it replace Connect? Maybe, maybe not, but we're not going to give up one to.
No.
Sure of the other.
No. But those are the points, Ian and Steve, so. I get, you know, when we met with these people, they said they would need help from us. For the, I mean, we have to provide them with the information. So that might end up being one or two or three of us, perhaps, in our spare time.
I just think that, you know, it's like the, you know, you have responsibilities. We all have different portfolios. If you don't have a point person, you can't do this by committee. Just, I know through experience. So you have one person who's responsible for it and they come to council and say, okay, this is where we are. This is what we need. And somebody has to go and find things and just keep the information flowing. But if you just say, we're just going to pick it up along the way, it's not going to get set up properly. I'll just tell you that every now and then. Even though it's five thousand dollars, it doesn't really matter.
No, I know.
But if you want a product that's going to work, it's not going to work if it's something like this. So somebody needs to step up and say, sure, now, Lon, if you're the one that's going to do it, that's me. Or you think Jamie can do it or?
I'm not sure. Can we have this discussion?
Perhaps we should be setting the question aside and having some thought and then perhaps meeting to talk about it. Because I totally agree with Ian. Someone on this council needs to take responsibility for this very important project, very important project.
All right. We can have that discussion when we get back to these people, right? Ask them what their requirements are, et cetera. I think that's a good point. Okay. Back to the resolutions. Is there any further discussion? Now, the call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Carrie, thank you. I will put my hand up to, just to start moving this forward. And I'll deal with Brad and Shelley and Ops Ready. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
I might be able to contribute something. So think about that.
Don't worry, I'll think about it. Okay, thank you. Moving on to VB Trails Map Update Professional Services. Whereas the RMVB was awarded a five thousand dollar grant under the two thousand twenty-five Trails Manitoba Grant Program, we proposed a VB Trails Map Update and signage study project. And whereas the grant application included the requirement to outsource professional services and project management, therefore be it resolved to approve and accept the proposed, the proposal presented by HTFC Planning and Design in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars plus applicable taxes, which includes the following objectives. Gather and consolidate all trail map data, confirm routes and trail names, verify changes in user groups, develop new map for digital and print use, and identify locations for future trail markers and trailhead signage by others. May I have a mover? Thank you, Steve. Second, Irwin, do you want to get your name in there? Thank you. Second, hi, Irwin. When we did meet with Ops Ready, I did tell them, you might recall, about this plan to work with HTFC. And they said that would be great. They could use those maps. So since I'm the point person for HTFC, that's a bit of a dovetail there. Okay?
Correctly, if I'm wrong, but I forget where I got this information from. But they're going to digitize these maps so that we can get it on Google Map. I was, I was in the impression that they were going to, like, when I go on Google Map and I want this trail, it'll tell me when I'm on, just like I do when I drive my car. So I thought that was a cool idea. So if that's the case, I think it's a great idea.
I don't remember that exactly, but it will be digitized and it will be available online. So, yeah. Steve, Ian, all right. All those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Putting my hand up. Carrie, thank you. All right, I'll deal with, I'll deal with that next week.
I'm wondering, I can't find the twelve thousand dollar figure that wasn't included in the agenda. I'm missing an attachment. Can you help me with that after the meeting? Yeah.
Just have it in Steve, yep.
It's on the page three of three.
Okay. I'll find it later. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, everybody. So moving on to correspondence, information and announcements. We've talked about trail systems being closed. Reminder to residents that we are having a public meeting here on July seventeenth at Social Scene, seven PM. For residents to learn more or ask questions about the increase in the school taxes on your two thousand twenty-five tax bills. Whether you agree with the increase or not, residents must pay their taxes by July thirty-first. The RMB has no say in the increased school taxes and other municipalities are also facing these high school tax increases. But because VB, the Village of Denarder and the town of Winnipeg Beach, all resort municipalities, get their taxes out early and have them due by July thirty-first. Those residents and our residents are being smacked with this bill. And they're seeing in real life what their bill is going to be. Other RMBs, their taxes are due at the end of October, so they haven't had that sticker shock yet. They know it's coming, but they don't know how much. So I think we will have some allies in our, in our plans to advocate for change to how the school taxes are collected in our province. But we are having a meeting for the public on July seventeenth here in the Social Scene at seven PM. We have invited various provincial ministers and MLAs and Lawrence L. Kirk School Division trustees. I'm not sure who will show up. I hope some of them do. But if not, we need to formulate a plan as a community to work together to try and make changes to this.
So the best thing that you can do is to contact the Minister of Finance right now, so that is Adrian Sala. You can find his contact information on the NBD website. But just so, in that way, hopefully this helps. His email is IMNFINS@manitoba.ca. Again, M-I-N-F-I-N@manitoba.ca. We have sent multiple emails to these ministers to date.
We have had one response.
Anyway, the issue is actually quite extensive. Once you get into the back history of Manitoba, I've been in shock with everything that I've found. Well, it's quite fascinating. But all of this stems from the idea that if you have more than one property, because this is actually the way that Manitoba basically functioned back in the day, you had a substantial amount of money. So, and fun fact, if you had multiple properties back in the day, you actually had as many votes as you did properties.
It doesn't work that way now.
No. So that's where this stems from. So when you contact him, you need to bring up the fact that we need to eliminate property, sorry, education on property taxes and to place it squarely on income. Because the problem is, is that the PCs and the NDP who keep flip-flopping governments, keep trying to deal with a broken system that is literally over a hundred years old. And it's not the way that it's functioning. So because we have cottage communities, it doesn't work the way that it might work for other, for other provinces. So that is, at the end of the day, that is a heart of a problem. And both, both parties have sworn that they were going to get rid of property taxes on education.
Education on property.
Sorry, education on property, sorry.
I've had some residents say, well, what is council doing? Well, council has met with our MLA, May Lausanne, and finance critic, Lauren Stone. We've written numerous emails. We've given a couple televised interviews. We've been quoted in the Free Press. I've been mentioning it at every municipal meeting I am at. We mentioned it at the AMM, which is the Association of Municipalities Conference in April. And an article will be in this edition of VB Herald, so.
And we're orchestrating the meeting in July.
And we're orchestrating the meeting in July. So, and we have some, some residents who are keen and learning all about this and working on a plan. So I think we can't do it alone. The residents have to step in and also help us out. So I think, I think we can hopefully make some change, but not for this year. This is a future thing. And I know our municipal staff are being inundated.
Why you pay us?
That's why we pay you. With calls and emails from residents about permanent or primary properties and it's, yeah, there's a lot going on.
Just to comment, if I may, Mayor McMorris, a small committee has been established, the Education Tax Committee. It has met several times already. We're meeting again. But the key thing we need from our electorate is set aside some time for the municipality on July seventeenth. Come out to the information concession. And we need to organize a letter-writing campaign, as Steve talked about. We have to let people, let the people in government know that the current solution is not fair. It's not reasonable. We do not have any vote in terms of who becomes a school trustee unless you're a permanent resident. So we have taxation without representation, which is a fundamental flaw that needs to be changed. But council has limited resources. We need to get people off their butts, come out to the meeting, listen to what's going on, and organize a program which will let the people on Broadway know that they've got to change the rule.
Just to recap, I mean, what's unfair about this is that if you have one property, you're getting fifteen hundred dollars back from the government. If you have a second property, you're not getting that back. So there's a difference that in Victoria Beach, eighty-five percent of cottage owners up here have, it's a second property. So they're, they're not getting the fifteen hundred dollars back and yet people that have a single property are getting fifteen hundred dollars. So it's almost like we're the ones that are paying the extra amount. The second part is that the school board has increased the tax for us by twenty-six percent. So we went from two point five to two point nine million. But we're paying, I think we're paying more to them than we have to for services. We only collect about five million dollars in tax. So we get two million dollars of the money that we collect to provide services to the community and we're giving three million dollars of that to Selkirk. We have ten kids that go to school there. But just to see how the whole thing is, it's just so unfair. And for the, the ADP government, I shouldn't pick on them, but for them to sort of say, well, if you have a second property, you're not getting the fifteen hundred dollars. They didn't talk to the school board at Selkirk and say, wait, you're increasing the taxes by twenty-six percent. We're taking away fifteen hundred dollars. So for me and for a number of people that I know, my taxes are up fifty percent this year. You know, I, I've owned houses for fifty years. I don't understand. I've never seen taxes increase that much in one year. This doesn't make any sense. So that's why we're having a meeting. That's why we want people to get out. And the only way we're going to do anything is if everybody starts calling the ministers. Because they're the ones that can make the change, as Steve was saying. They've got to figure something out. But the idea that the second property owner is paying all the school tax, school tax is something that's supposed to be paid by everybody. But if I rent, I don't, I don't pay it. If I lease a property, I don't pay it. And so it just doesn't make, it just doesn't make any sense. So we have to try and do something about this and try to strengthen that.
Thank you. Steve, move her.
It's just more of a correction, but this is what differentiates Manitoba from all other provinces who, was it seven, I think, who tax education through property. Which is that we're the only province who, where the school board is the one who makes the increase based off of what their needs are. So. Yes, well, they were also scarred for funding for over five years. But I just want to make that correction, just so that when people are emailing the minister, they understand what they're, what they're talking about. So the school board sets the increases based on what they believe, yes, their, their needs are for that upcoming year. And for the white province that does that versus other provinces, it is the province who actually sets it. So in this case, the province would not be able to speak to the school board and to force them to reduce their increases.
So save all these thoughts and plans and ideas for our July seventeenth meeting, please. Last weekend, I attended the AGM, the Plage Albert Property Owners Association. They missed you, Irwin. Answered some questions, received more questions on a variety of topics. Sappi Road safety is an ongoing concern. And recently, Public Works in consultation with the VB police did put up some new four-way stop signs on Sappi Road. And according to residents who live along there, they are making a difference. Some people aren't thrilled, but it just forces people to slow down and actually stop, which does increase the safety on Sappi. Talk of installing speed bumps or speed tables, they were referred to, a different type of speed bump has not progressed, nor is that something that, that we'll be doing at this time. Some council members will also be attending the Wantasing Beach Cottage Owners Association meeting, which is at the end of June. And that's sort of what I have. Anybody else? Steve, no. Ian?
Yeah, I also, I got a lot of calls from, from people that drive down Sappi's road and they're wondering why the stop signs were put where they could put them. Because I know that you and I were at the meeting with the RMB Alexander a year ago and we were, we were talking about putting stop signs. For people crossing the road, going to the Sappi's Restaurant, to Sappi's, because that's where people cross the road and we thought we'd put stop signs there. Now they're on, one's on Old Mill, where only one person lives, and the other one's at the other end. And it just, I don't know how that ended up there rather than where, where we discussed.
Miscommunication. They weren't supposed to go there.
Okay. The committee moved back.
Oh, that's, yeah.
That's where they should be. I mean, people, you know, in July and August, you've got fifty kids walking down the street. They go to the restaurant, they go across the street to Sappi's. That's where the stop signs should be.
Yep.
Right? We only, leave one up because you've got two sets. So, but just put one down by that road. You've got a stop sign for the road that comes on to Sappi's, there's a stop sign there. All you need is on either side to allow people to cross the road. And we talked about a walkway or whatever. We decided not to do that, but that's what we decided on was to put the stop signs there.
Right.
You want it right in front of Sappi?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's on the corner, whatever that side street is.
Yep.
It'd be a four-way.
But it's a. But it wouldn't be a four-way.
It's a four-way road. Well, technically, it's a four-way because there is a. Well, technically it's a four-way because there is a, a driveway to restaurant.
Yeah, that's good.
I'll leave that up to the men and the police.
We wouldn't sure if the police were involved with that, but Blon, Blon has explained it that it was a miscommunication, so let's get that, the, the very first sign that you kind of run the road to nowhere.